Thank you to board colleagues who are joining us, Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff that are joining us today, and to any guests that are present, both in person and virtual. Welcome. Thanks for joining us. We are going to go ahead and start our meeting as we do at every board meeting. I'll read our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions and making decisions for the district to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. Read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, welcome. Thanks for joining us, everyone. Hope everyone's having a happy holiday season, and we will can start with our agenda. Ms. Downing, would you please do a roll call?
Sure. Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, present.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Mylan Jr.?
Robert Mylan Jr., present.
Rachel Russell? And Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's regular board agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Downing?
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.?
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell? Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, board. We're going to jump right into our agenda, board. We have a presentation this afternoon regarding our first quarter KISA and outcome data. Would welcome Dr. Conrad to the podium as he's setting up. He's going to share a brief presentation, and then we'll allow her have time for some questions and answer for our board. So please make sure you're making notes of any questions you may have. Good afternoon, Dr. Conrad. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, President Lopez, board members, Dr. Stubblefield. I am Dr. Conrad. I am the Executive Director of our Technology and Data Departments, and I am reporting on the first quarter KISA and outcomes. So we like to start with our mission and vision, and our North Star. You can see that we are exceeding expectations on our North Star, so that is fantastic. We are ahead of schedule. And as we have done in the past, we like to talk about our KISA. KISA has moved from KISA 1.0 to 2.0, and we have officially made the transition as well. And so they have maintained the fundamentals, but we are looking at the structures and lead indicators. Specifically, we have chosen to focus on quality instruction, and systems of support.
I'm so sorry. I totally forgot to do this. I'm just going to interrupt you really quick. If anyone needs any language interpretation, we do have interpreters available for today's meeting. I apologize for not starting out with that. If you do need an interpreter, please let one of our staff members know, and we'll make sure that we have an interpreter available for you. Gracias. Thank you. Sorry about that, Dr. Conrad.
No problem. Thank you. And so we have developed our six-month and our one-year targets according to our KISA plan, which looks at specifically district collaboration expectations for implementing high-quality instructional materials. And for this, one of the reasons that we push in this direction is because the State Department is also pushing in this direction with high-quality instructional materials. And we are partnering with outside organizations, TNTP, which the State Department is also partnering with, to help us understand what this looks like and what we should expect in our classrooms. Because of this, we need to inspect what we expect. And so we have developed the Learning Implementation Focus Tool, or LIFT. This tool allows us to calibrate across the district of what we expect our classrooms to look like, what teaching high-quality instructional materials looks like on a day-to-day basis. So we gather this evidence. We go through observations. The buildings are doing observations. District leaders are doing observations so that we can see what this looks like. It informs our professional learning. What we provide to staff directly comes from these observations. It serves as a formative tool. It's not an evaluative tool. So it's meant to highlight our strengths and point out some opportunities for growth and reflection. So on this, we specifically focused on critical element two. It's standards-aligned tasking materials. Now, we want to observe all of these elements, these critical elements, but right now specifically, to get this off the ground, we're focused on critical element two. You can see some of what it means in critical element two, two, with early implementation, what that looks like, what scaling looks like, and what sustaining looks like. So you can see we've had 1,700 observations, and you can see the orange box highlights the standard line, that critical element two, and where our average score is. So with this, what we are hoping to achieve by this is moving our students out of performance level one. If we are teaching high-quality instructional materials, and our students are exposed to that, we should see more students move out of performance level one into the higher performance categories. So we do have goals for this, so that they are measurable by the end of this year and by the end of 2031. Currently, we have 13 buildings in that early implementation stage, 27 in the scaling, and three in the sustaining. This allows us to pinpoint precisely how we can support buildings in moving from one performance level to the other. And then we tie this to our outcomes. So first, we look at our at-risk screening data. If we are doing these things, is it impacting the outcomes like we need them to? So looking at the fall FastBridge AMATH, we are seeing that if you are in that sustaining implementation, your scores tend to be higher than if you are in the other categories, especially over the early implementation stage. So as you do these things, as we see this in your classroom, it is transforming into results for our students. We are seeing the same thing with A-reading. Now, this is foundational. This is an at-risk screener, and that's what this data is measuring. We will also look at our proficiency district benchmark data as well. So we break it down by demographics, by building status, for both math and ELA. We look at students with disabilities, and breaking it down for math and reading as well, and looking at those trends. ELL status, and we also race in ethnicity for both math and ELA. We do the same thing for proficiency screeners, our benchmark assessments. Now, these are different. They're designed differently. They're meant to measure proficiency. We know that it takes longer to get to proficiency. And so some of the results look slightly different here, especially when it comes to reading. On the math side of it, it does follow that normal trend, where if you're at sustaining, you tend to master standards at a higher rate than if you're at early implementation. But in reading, it looks a little different. We need to go back and make sure that our observational data is calibrated. This was the first time that we were using it, and we need to make sure that we are getting enough observations to make this data reliable. And so you can go through, and you can look at the disability status, the ELL status, and we're seeing those trends. Reverse for ELA as well. Math looked normal, but ELA is slightly different. And then also by race. The really important part is that we are able to really focus our efforts for quarters two and three by doing very specific things to help buildings grow in their implementation. And so we're able to, at our Learning Summit, change the PD or focus the PD to make sure that we are helping schools where they need the assistance to improve that high-quality instruction. We continue to work with the principals and buildings to calibrate the walkthroughs and to ensure that we have enough data there. We're really focused on that grade-level rigor. And so we are really intentional on observing and making sure that that is where we are assisting our students, because every student deserves a successful educational experience, not by chance, but by design. And we need to make sure that that is consistent across the district. We are also focused on making sure that day after day and lesson after lesson, we are layering it so that students are continuing to get good lessons, not just randomly good lessons, but good lessons day after day. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Conrad. I know, board, that was a lot of data and information to digest. Hopefully, you had some time to review. Would open the floor for any questions. Just appreciate the team, you and the teams of work in compiling this and making sure that we have this ready so we keep our academic data in front of us as we continue to make decisions, the best decisions we can for our scholars. Dr. Stubblefield, and then I'll open to the board.
I just want to, because I think it'll come up. We still will provide the individual building profiles that we did last year for each building. It was just because of the timing. They're finishing up their second quarter DBAs.
DBAs right now.
Right now. So instead of giving it with that incomplete data, we'll have that before, we should have it by winter break or shortly after, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Would open the floor to the board, Ms. Brownlee Page?
First, thank you for this. I think we do have to have high expectations. But I'm bothered, or maybe you can tell me more about this, because if they're at levels one and two, then they're not at grade level. Okay? So you want them to be at grade level, but some of them are not. So how do you work both? I'm behind, and I'm trying to catch up. So is there more detail you're going to give us? Because this throws me off, because I want to know what tutoring are we providing? My kid is in the third grade, but he's really at maybe first point, 1.5. So what's offered to him to help him get up to grade level and also meet the standards that he's supposed to be working on? I don't see that in there. And what tutoring? What other strategies? How are we helping our teachers? Because when I taught, that was the struggle. I got to get him up and make sure we work on what we currently have to work on. So I just want to know, how do we do that? And all this sounds good. Don't get me wrong. It's beautiful. We need to say that. We need to do that. But how do we help our teachers, our parents, our kids? If I'm behind, then where's the part that comes with that, in addition to what I'm already going to have to do to keep them at third grade? If they're in the third and not really working at third grade, so where's the help? Where's the strategy? So how do we do that?
So there's a few things I want to point out. As I answer the question first, performance level one, two, three, four is all grade level. It's all grade level. The state assessment only measures grade-level content. Now, could you just be basic in that knowledge? Yes. But it's still grade level. So our state assessment, if I say that your performance category one or two, that doesn't mean that you're off-grade level. It just means that you have a basic understanding of grade-level material. I know that it's minor, but the state really wants us to push on that. The second point is that students are off-grade level. The state assessment doesn't identify that, but students are off-grade level. You have third-grade students that are doing lower-grade work. They're still on first-grade material, right? It's a real struggle. And so what we focus on is we cannot intervene our way out of a core problem. And so we have to focus on the rigor in the classroom. Students have to be exposed to grade-level rigor. And so what you're seeing with the LIFT tool is focusing on the grade level. We also focus on tiered intervention. And so in our PLC groups, in MTSS processes, we do provide tutoring in buildings. So there are things that are being done outside of this. What you're seeing here is that focus, that intentional focus, to make sure that students aren't missing out on the core instruction of grade level. But there are behind-the-scenes interventions and tiers.
So to answer your question more specifically, I can speak like at the elementary level. So I can go at each level. To add on to what Dr. Conrad is saying, at the elementary level, they have intervention time. And so when they look at those specific skills that each of the individual kids may be behind on, or if they need enrichment, they put them in small groups, and they're either getting, in some buildings, they're getting the individual tutoring through the Ignite Reading Grant, like that you all approved previously. In other, in all of the buildings, they have staff assigned to students based off of those materials. And then, Kevin, if you know off the top of your head, we do have those supplemental intervention materials that you have approved for both math and ELA at all of our levels. So in middle school, they have win time. And at high school, I don't know what they call it, but at every level, they have specific time for intervention and/or enrichment. And at our high schools, you know that we have, and I think the middle schools, they have the live tutors that come in from TPT tutoring. And they also, our partnership with Gear Up, they lean in and provide support. So I don't have it all in front of me. And unfortunately, Dr. Fernandez Flores is at a meeting with Kaufman, so she's not here. But we can provide all of the additional support and intervention and enrichment that the students receive outside of the core instruction, in order for them to move from the basic to the twos, and from the twos to the threes. I don't remember the specific categories right now. But that is a part of it. What you're seeing in this report is the end result based off of those things that we are doing. But the interventions are happening pre-K through 12 for the students, and it's built into their school day.
Can I get, like, the time span? How much time are they spending with that in the tutorial sessions? What do you offer for their parents to help supplement? That they can help their children as well?
Yeah.
You know, we're saying these materials. What will parents be able to get, so that they can help their kids?
Yeah. So it's a combination. They have the curriculum night. They also have the resources that they share out at home. And so we can put all of that together and provide it to the board and put it on wherever the parents are accessing it. And we can get the timeframes for intervention per day or per week for each grade level, too.
Because I mean no disrespect. I taught for 30 years. That's a constant struggle. And you're fighting like heck, because you want the best for your kids. But I want to be realistic, too, because I'm behind, and I'm trying to catch up. And that's the constant battle. And that's what I hear from kids who are in college, too. Trying to catch up. Trying to stay up. So just need some more, because something's missing.
So we'll provide what we're doing, and then that'll allow you to ask more specific questions, and/or for us to see where there might be gaps from your perspective. Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. I'm going to go Dr. Nguyen, and then Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, because that was my first question, because I am looking at the third quarter update that you all provided us in May 2025, and it does have the individual school results. So look forward to being able to add them to this report. Help me understand, in the third quarter report, we used installation, initial implementation, and full implementation. This report, we're using early implementation, scaling, and sustaining. Where do they go together? Where do they fit? I mean, these 25 buildings who were at the installation level in May 25, where are they today?
So we changed the language to match the state's language. So when the state was doing this work with TNTP, they came out with this language and these documentations, and so we matched that. We did not do a crosswalk between the two, because last year, we were looking at different variables. This year, we were very focused on our high-quality instructional materials. And so they don't necessarily overlap or match, because we changed what we were looking at in the observational tool that we were using. So this is very specific to the high-quality instructional materials where our KISA is focused.
And the reason we changed was based off the feedback that we received regarding KISA and the accreditation process. Last year, when we started that, they hadn't settled on that. And so in order for us to not to be doing something different from the accreditation process, we aligned what we had with that based off the feedback from our KISA School Improvement Day. So from that standpoint, Dr. Nguyen, if you look this year, it shows, based off of that specific data, we have, and I'm just saying this for the public, I know you have this 13 schools that are in early implementation, 27 that are at scaling implementation, which is the middle one, and then three that are at sustaining implementation. And because it's aligned with the accreditation process, which is, I can't remember how many years, this, you'll have a more solid comparison from year to year moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And these three buildings that are sustaining, what level?
What are, are you asking, which, what are the three buildings?
Correct. Well, you have to have by name, but elementary, middle?
High school, middle, or?
Elementary.
There are, all three of them are elementary.
Okay. And my last question. So the LIFT tool is brand-new this year?
It is.
Yep. And at the beginning of this school year, remember, we shared that we were no longer continuing our contract with DigiCoach, and we were building out our own tool. So it's a walkthrough tool that we built out specific to align with what we're doing. But if you were going to have a comparison, it was, we used to use DigiCoach to gather the feedback.
So we do have something to compare it, or this is beginning a baseline?
This is the beginning. It's the baseline.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Ms. Russell?
Yeah, I just had a couple of thoughts. My first one is, I appreciate this work, and I appreciate the continued refinement, but I continued to struggle for the last four years. Every year, we're always starting with a new baseline, which makes it really hard to track or tell the story of progress. I understand all of the things that you had said. I understood all of the reason things change. And yes, we're in a changing environment every day. But I think it's very, very hard for me to look at one thing, understand it, ask questions, and then come back and be like, well, now we're not doing this thing. And it is, it's detrimental, because it makes it hard to tell the story of the growth. We know there's growth, and there's other metrics we can use. I will get off of my tangent about this, but I will continue to advocate that we may need to be advocating to the state as well, that it makes it really, really hard if every time we are doing something else. Now we've got a new state assessment. Now we can't even use that data. Like, this is an ongoing problem in education. The second thing I wanted to say, and Dr. Nguyen, I know you mentioned quarter three, was the quarter four to quarter one comparison. I saw that there is almost none of that comparison from the end of last year to this year, which in our last almost a year. which in our last almost a year and a half ago update, there was some comparison data for the full year from the year prior to the quarter one, which like, we looked at the data from a point of this is where we're headed, but we don't have a full year data like we do now. And so I'm just interested, and I'm saying this because we also offer summer enrichment. And so like, are we seeing gains in specific buildings or specific groups where the summer enrichment is actually helping facilitate some of that continued learning from the year prior? And I'm maybe asking a complicated question.
Yeah.
But if we can track that to make the case for summer enrichment programs or just the continued conversations that we have around, how do we value, because we know summer, that four weeks, it flies by and kids don't remember it. But over the course of the first quarter, does it come back? And do we see gains there? Like, is the gains not in the, do you remember it from the time you left then? But from the end to then the end of the quarter one? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
It does. And I think that this year was more difficult than most years because the change in the state assessment scores and then some of the things that were on your guys' plate that you were dealing with at the start of the year. And so some of those reports got pushed and moved.
Okay.
Reasonably so. But we do have those reports. Those are things that internally we have. And so I'm happy to put that in a Friday update on the summer learning reports that traditionally have, and then some of the other data points. If you're able to get those over to us, we can definitely.
Yeah, and I think the only other thing that I wanted to add was also the personal experience. So I have a, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't have a problem with it if you do. But I have a child who has an IEP in this district. So every quarter, from the parental side, I get a notification, quarterly progress report that says your child's meeting progress, MPG, or whatever the initials are. And so if I understand, a third of our students all have IEP. So about 8,000 families are getting some version of, hey, this is where your child is on grade level or not on grade level. And would that be part of that communication strategy for what parents should be working on? Like, I know my child's behind in one thing. And so we don't focus on that because he has to get a certain concept before you can even look at those things. And so when Ms. Page was talking to you, what is the communication to parents? Like, is that a tool that is across the district used to communicate?
For students who have an IEP, that is a requirement. So, and Dr. Laurie, if I'm misspeaking, please interrupt. They do get their quarterly update on their individual goals and is specific to their individual goals. So it looks different for every student, but it is giving parents specific feedback around the goals that are identified in their IEPs that, in order for them to make progress. So yes, that.
To get to that grade level goal, and I'm sorry, it may be a very case by case.
It is, yeah. So some of them, if the goal is around grade level, but it also can be on a skill, it could be on a behavior, it could be social or emotional. So it really just depends on what their grade, what their goals are for their IEPs.
Okay. Okay. I was just trying to put a, like, because then the data that you show around, we're seeing this many successes for our students with IEP. Is that specific to grade level? Or that's just specific to their specific IEP, I guess?
The data that I share is specific to the state assessment data.
Okay.
Because every student is very individualized. So we don't report on individual data in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Ms. Brownlee Page?
And then I have a question about the two goals. The one that says by 2026, we will reduce the percent of students scoring at Level One by one student in each classroom. Is that really high expectations? You're just saying one in every classroom?
Can you tell what percentage that equates to?
That's about 11% jump. And so statewide, it's very rare that you see a 2% or 3% jump. So it is ambitious when we look at the percent. But when you break it down to the classroom level, it seems attainable for us to be focused on that. But statewide, that's not what you see.
Why can't you write it that we're expecting to have 11% growth? Because when you say one, I took you literally to mean one. So could we write this better so parents can have a better understanding? It's saying one, that's what I see. And help us. Now, you're the expert. Make it where people can really understand it. If one represents 11%, why can't we say 11%?
I think we can say both. I think when we broke it down to one, it was, as a teacher, you know, if I went in there and said to you, we expect you to move 11%, that's overwhelming. That's, so it really aligned with our whole 1% better every day. I understand what you're saying. We can say both, but it really was to make it so people can understand that is attainable in that. But it's also ambitious when you look at the trends around how data is moved. We can say 50%, right? But if that's not realistic, we really were trying to make it realistic to those who are in the classroom to say, we can do this, you can do this. So that's where that came from, but it translates to 11%.
But isn't that, respect the opinion, but to me, it's conflicting. Now, either we're going to shoot for 11, we may not get 11. What if we get eight? To me, that's growth. But I just wish we could be more realistic with it and not mislead because they don't know that this meant that.
The, yeah.
Again, somebody might be like me. I took it literally. It said one, and I thought, wow, we got high expectations and we're just saying one? So I would like to see us be clear so everybody's on the same page.
And we can do it. I think it's important for us that we say both because I think it makes it more realistic to people say, we could say 11%, which equates to about one student per classroom. But that helps people to understand like what 11% really is or what, whatever percentage is. So yeah, we can play with that, yes.
On the other goal, it says by 2031, we will reduce the percent of students scoring at Level One to match the state average. Well, what's the state average? I'm asking you, what is the state average?
I think on that report, it shows the state average as the bottom bar. But let me, let me, so the state average is the lower bar. So it says state of Kansas next to it. So the top bar is USD 500, Kansas City, that's us, where we are. And then the bottom bar is the state of Kansas. And that's their average, is 28% right now currently.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. Additional questions? Thoughts? Appreciate the information. Dr. Conrad, I know that was a lot to share in a short time. Excuse me. Board would just share. Please continue to review that information. We'll be getting the building profiles once those are prepared. I also took note that we will be receiving from administration a list of some of those support services initiatives that students and scholars and families are getting, both for the scholars and also for parents or guardians to help support their scholars. So those are a couple of things that we'll be receiving from staff, from our leadership team moving forward. And I know there were some additional questions that we took note of as follow-up. So thank you, Board. As questions come up, as you continue to dive into the data, because it was a lot, please share those questions with Dr. Stubblefield and we'll make sure we share with the entire board. Okay, if there are no other questions on that item, we're going to move into our next agenda item, item three. Would entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma to include Dr. Stubblefield and Mr. Goheen for 10 minutes going in at 4:40?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? All right, Ms. Downing?
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.?
Allen Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
And Dr. Wynn?
Dr. Wynn, yes. And Mr. Lopez, do you have a link?
Yes, I emailed that to you a little while ago, Dr. Wynn. If you can't get it to work, text me or Dawn and we'll get that to you. Thank you.
...
Appreciate you being here and helping us out with that. So, we'll continue with our agenda board. Um, we'll jump back to item four on our agenda. It's one of our favorite parts of the, um, meetings when we get to celebrate our staff and scholars with our awards and recognition. So, um, would invite Dr. Jones to the podium as we celebrate our staff. Um, and as a reminder, he's coming to the podium after all of the presentations of our staff and scholars. We will, um, take a quick break so that the board can take a photo with, um, the individuals and the scholars first, and then their family and/or administrators that are here with them to celebrate them. So, um, we'll take a quick recess after we recognize folks. Dr. Jones, good evening.
Good evening, President Lopez, and good evening to you, the Board of Education, and Dr. Stubblefield. Uh, I am so proud and honored to be able to present to you not only our Employee of the Month, as well as Administrators of the Month as well. So, we will begin with our, um, our first person that we have here. With our Administrators of the Month, we have, uh, Lupita Ambrosio, Principal Sec... I'm sorry, let's start there, that's not there. Administrator. Laderrick Collins, Director of Alternative Learning and Special Program of Student Services. Come on down. Mr. Collins is a student-centered, disciplined, and highly intentional leader whose influence extends well beyond his department. He is a strong advocate for students and staff, consistently encouraging others to grow as leaders. His integrity, professionalism, and deep care for people make him a powerful role model in KC KPS and in the community. He supports his team wholeheartedly, offers guidance without expectation, and reminds grounded... remains grounded in his faith, which drives his commitment to service. With whether mentoring youth, strengthening discipline practices, or engaging in difficult but necessary conversations, Mr. Collins leads with clarity, purpose, and compassion. He exemplifies the very best of KC KPS and is truly deserving of this nomination. I present to you, Mr. Laderrick Collins. Mr. Rufus Black. Assistant Principal and Athletic Director of Windout High School as nominated by KC KPS District Employees. Mr. Rufus Black deserves recognition as a District Administrator of the Month because he embodies the highest standards of educational leadership. With 50 years of service to KC KPS, he has created meaningful, lasting impact for generations of students, staff, and families. Mr. Black's daily presence sets him apart. His... he starts each morning at 6:00 a.m. greeting students with a smile and often stays past 9:00 p.m. to ensure everyone is safe after events. His consistency, work ethic, and servant leadership inspires all who work with him. As both Assistant Principal and Athletic Director at Windout High School, he manages countless responsibilities while maintaining approachable and deeply invested in students and staff. He is... his mentorship changes lives, and he is an extraordinary administrator. I present to you, the one and only, Mr. Rufus Black.
The one and only.
Bulldog.
The bulldog.
Stacy Chapman, Principal of Carl B. Bruce. Principal of Carl B. Bruce Middle School. Stacy Chapman has served in multiple KC KPS roles, including teacher, instructional coach, Assistant Principal, and Principal. A proud Windout High School alumna who gives back to her community. Mrs. Chapman is the best principal, approachable, and deeply connected to students, knowing each by name. She is visible in the halls, active in the classrooms, and a strong advocate for staff and students. Her leadership has brought meaningful changes to Carl Bruce, uh, Middle School. She is transparent, supportive, and has cultivated retention. Because she listens and leads by example, our halls and classrooms are safer, more productive, and teachers feel valued and stay. She leads with professionalism, kindness, and high expectations, building strong connections with students and the community. I present to you, Mrs. Stacy Chapman. Dr. Denise Deckard, Principal of Morris Early Childhood Center. As a group of educators with many years in KC KPS, we agree that Dr. Deckard is the best administrator we've worked with. She respects and supports her staff, understands the importance of our roles, and is always available for questions, needs, or guidance. She reminds us that family comes first. She also works tirelessly for our community, staying engaged with families at every event. Under Dr. Deckard's leadership, Morris Early Childhood Center has become a joyful, thriving community where staff and families feel supported every day. Her leadership and heart make Morris a place people want to be. She consistently goes above and beyond, bringing new experiences to students, anticipating staff needs, and prioritizing everyone's well-being. She truly embodies the PAL or PAL in principle, and KC KPS would be fortunate to have more leaders like her. I present to you, Dr. Denise Deckard. Our Employees of the Month for the month of December. Emily Perry, Teacher at Carruthers Elementary School, nominated by Catherine Reeves. Emily has been such a support to me as a first-year teacher at Carruthers. She has selflessly mentored me, answered questions, provided support, and has been an amazing role model. I am so thankful to have her as my teammate. Nominated by Catherine Reeves, I present to you, Emily Perry. Last but not least, Lupita Ambrosio, Principal Secretary at Frank Rushton Elementary School, nominated by San Juanita Lopez. Lupita consistently goes above and beyond in her work, showing exceptional dedication, reliability, and teamwork. Her positivity and commitment to excellence make her a role model for others. She ensures every day runs smoothly and contributes meaningfully to our team's success. I present to you, Ms. Lupita Ambrosio.
Thank you, Dr. Jones and Mr. Legler, and congratulations to our Administrators and Employees of the Month. Next, we will celebrate our Students of the Month. Good evening, Mr. Hansford.
Good evening, Board and guests. I am very happy to be here tonight to, uh, present our Students of the Month, and we start with early childhood. M was nominated by her teacher for service and citizenship. The teacher shares that M is a shining example of kindness and service in the classroom. She arrives each day eager to help, consistently offering support to classmates and assisting the teacher throughout daily routines. This past week, when a peer was feeling upset and missing her parents, M stepped in with genuine empathy. She encouraged her classmate to share her feelings and even offered a personal story to help her feel understood and comforted. With her bright smile, caring heart, and natural ability to lift others up, M brings warmth to every space she enters. She demonstrates maturity well beyond her years and has no doubt she has a wonderful and impactful future ahead. Congratulations to our early childhood student, M. With all the cameras, M prefers not to be at the front of the... of the board meeting today. Our, uh, our elementary student of the month is Iker Alejandro Antion from Carruthers Elementary, nominated by his music teacher, Kayden Matney. Iker stands out as an exceptional student whose dedication, talent, and character shine both inside and outside the classroom. He consistently puts forth his best effort and naturally motivates those around him to do the same. Academically, Iker is outstanding. He approaches every challenge with curiosity and determination, and his strong work ethic allows him to excel across all subject areas. His enthusiasm for learning is contagious, inspiring his peers, and reflecting his genuine love of knowledge. Beyond academics, Iker's passion for music is remarkable. He is an active member of the orchestra, all-city choir, and the Bobcat Band, and he generously shares his musical gifts by playing viola at his church. What truly sets Iker apart is his heart. He fosters a welcoming and supportive environment wherever he goes, making sure no one feels left out, especially during group performances. His leadership, kindness, and positive energy make him a role model for his classmates. Iker is an exemplary student, musician, and friend. It has been a joy to watch him grow, and there is no doubt he will continue to accomplish extraordinary things in the years ahead. Congratulations, Iker.
Mr. Hansford, can we proceed on the... thank you. You beat me to it.
Red or mine? Our middle school student of the month is Kelly Carolina Garcia Sanchez, a student at Eisenhower Middle School, nominated by her teacher, Mariette Bishop. It is my pleasure to nominate Kelly Garcia for Student of the Month. Throughout this month, Kelly has demonstrated exceptional dedication to her academic work and her contributions to our school community. Academically, Kelly consistently excels. She approaches every assignment with focus, curiosity, and a strong work ethic. Her performance in class reflects not only a solid understanding of the material, but also a genuine desire to learn and grow. Kelly is also a model of good sportsmanship. Whether in physical education or during team activities like girls' volleyball and basketball, she shows respect, fairness, and encouragement toward her peers. Her positive attitude helps create an uplifting and inclusive environment for everyone. One of Kelly's most impressive qualities is her consistently positive demeanor. She comes to class prepared, engaged, and eager to participate. Her enthusiasm is contagious and has a meaningful impact on those around her. Additionally, Kelly has demonstrated excellent attendance, reflecting responsibility, reliability, and a strong commitment to her education. Her consistent presence sets a wonderful example for her classmates. For these reasons, I am proud to recommend Kelly for Student of the Month. She truly embodies the values and expectations of our school community. Congratulations, Kelly. And our high school student of the month is Juan Pablo Jimenez Reyes, a student at Windout High School. Bulldogs well represented tonight. Nominated by Preston Piles, Megan Scott, and Patrick Thompson. Juan Pablo is an exemplary student who consistently demonstrates discipline, leadership, and a commitment to excellence, both academically and personally. Multiple staff members have highlighted his outstanding contributions. Preston Piles, his teacher and coach, says Juan Pablo has demonstrated incredible discipline, determination, and character throughout the past month. As a key member of the Windout Bulldogs football team, he leads by example both on the field and in the classroom. His dedication to his academics and his positive influence across the building make him highly deserving of Student of the Month recognition. Patrick Thompson's teacher says, "This year, Juan Pablo has been an invaluable asset in both the classroom and the kitchen. He consistently serves as a role model for underclassmen, giving 110% in everything he does. When asked to complete a task, he goes above and beyond, anticipating additional needs and taking initiative. His leadership within the classroom and lab has been exceptional, setting a high standard for his peers." And finally, Megan Scott's teacher says Juan Pablo demonstrates kindness and support for all classmates. During a recent entrepreneurial project, he not only completed a significant portion of his team's work, but also assisted every other team to ensure their success. He encouraged his teammates to support other groups as well, fostering a collaborative environment. Additionally, Juan Pablo volunteers for extra support at events without complaint or expectation of recognition, consistently showing himself to be a true team player. It is difficult to select a single category for Juan Pablo as he excels in multiple areas. He attends school daily and less participating in activity, serves as a captain of the football team, and consistently offers help wherever it is needed. His leadership, dedication, and willingness to go above and beyond make him a remarkable candidate for Student of the Month. Congratulations, Juan Pablo.
Thank you, Mr. Hansford. Congratulations to all of our Scholars of the Month. Before we take a quick break to, um, take our photos, remember we'll take a picture with employees and scholars, then, uh, staff and family members that are here to represent them. I want to take a quick moment while we have everyone here, um, and I know I shared something at the last board meeting, but, um, she's not through for the night, she still has to stick around. But we want to publicly acknowledge Ms. Rachel Russell, Board Vice President, um, as this is her official last school board meeting with us. Again, we're keeping you till midnight. No, I'm kidding. Uh, but, uh, we just wanted to say thank you to, uh, Ms. Russell for your four years of service on the board, for your continued commitment, dedication, um, passion, and engagement on the board, and helping all of us to be better, um, individually and collectively as a team. You have helped us to continue to grow and make sure that students are centered in every decision that we make. So, um, tonight, we just want to say thank you publicly, and there's no more appropriate time to do it during our awards and recognitions, which you helped lead. a student at Eisenhower Middle School, nominated by her teacher, Mariette Bishop. It is my pleasure to nominate Kelly Garcia for student of the month. Throughout this month, Kelly has demonstrated exceptional dedication to her academic work and her contributions to our school community. Academically, Kelly consistently excels. She approaches every assignment with focus, curiosity, and a strong work ethic. Her performance in class reflects not only a solid understanding of the material, but also a genuine desire to learn and grow. Kelly is also a model of good sportsmanship. Whether in physical education or during team activities like girls' volleyball and basketball, she shows respect, fairness, and encouragement toward her peers. Her positive attitude helps create an uplifting and inclusive environment for everyone. One of Kelly's most impressive qualities is her consistently positive demeanor. She comes to class prepared, engaged, and eager to participate. Her enthusiasm is contagious and has a meaningful impact on those around her. Additionally, Kelly has demonstrated excellent attendance, reflecting responsibility, reliability, and a strong commitment to her education. Her consistent presence sets a wonderful example for her classmates. For these reasons, I am proud to recommend Kelly for student of the month. She truly embodies the values and expectations of our school community. Congratulations, Kelly. And our high school student of the month is Juan Pablo Jimenez Reyes, a student at Wind Dot High School. Bulldogs well represented tonight. Nominated by Preston Piles, Megan Scott, and Patrick Thompson. Juan Pablo is an exemplary student who consistently demonstrates discipline, leadership, and a commitment to excellence, both academically and personally. Multiple staff members have highlighted his outstanding contributions. Preston Piles, his teacher and coach, says Juan Pablo has demonstrated incredible discipline, determination, and character throughout the past month. As a key member of the Wind Dot Bulldogs football team, he leads by example both on the field and in the classroom. His dedication to his academics and his positive influence across the building make him highly deserving of student of the month recognition. Patrick Thompson's teacher says this year Juan Pablo has been an invaluable asset in both the classroom and the kitchen. He consistently serves as a role model for underclassmen, giving 110% in everything he does. When asked to complete a task, he goes above and beyond, anticipating additional needs and taking initiative. His leadership within the classroom and lab has been exceptional, setting a high standard for his peers. And finally, Megan Scott's teacher says Juan Pablo demonstrates kindness and support for all classmates. During a recent entrepreneurial project, he not only completed a significant portion of his team's work, but also assisted every other team to ensure their success. He encouraged his teammates to support other groups as well, fostering a collaborative environment. Additionally, Juan Pablo volunteers for extra support at events without complaint or expectation of recognition, consistently showing himself to be a true team player. It is difficult to select a single category for Juan Pablo as he excels in multiple areas. He attends school daily unless participating in activity, serves as a captain of the football team, and consistently offers help wherever it is needed. His leadership, dedication, and willingness to go above and beyond make him a remarkable candidate for student of the month. Congratulations, Juan Pablo.
Thank you, Mr. Hansford. Congratulations to all of our scholars of the month. Before we take a quick break to take our photos, remember we'll take a picture with employees and scholars, then staff and family members that are here to represent them. I want to take a quick moment while we have everyone here. I know I shared something at the last board meeting, but she's not through for the night. She still has to stick around. But we want to publicly acknowledge Ms. Rachel Russell, Board Vice President, as this is her official last school board meeting with us. Again, we're keeping you till midnight. No, I'm kidding. But we just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Russell for your four years of service on the board, for your continued commitment, dedication, passion, and engagement on the board in helping all of us to be better individually and collectively as a team. You have helped us to continue to grow and make sure that students are centered in every decision that we make. So tonight, we just want to say thank you publicly. And there's no more appropriate time to do it during our awards and recognitions, which you helped lead to make sure that we had a space in place where we could honor our students, our scholars, and employees of the month. So that is part of your legacy that you will leave, as well as some of the other initiatives that you helped to continue to build, including our dual-language initiative, which you stood behind fiercely as a supporter. Our welcome center, which you continue to help lead, support our faces and our entire welcome center. You helped us pass a successful school bond that will be here for generations and will educate young folks for generations. And you helped us to make sure that we always center students in every decision that we make. So we are better because of you, Rachel, and I just wanted to personally say thank you for your commitment to this board. It is not easy. We all know that. But you have given everything, continue to give everything, and I know you'll continue to be giving everything. Even though it's not from the dais, we know that you will be out there working hard. So we really appreciate you. We thank you. And we're excited to see the next iteration of what engagement looks like for you with the board and district. So on behalf of our board and board, if anyone would like to share anything, we do want to just say thank you for your commitment. And we'll miss you, but we know you'll continue to be engaged. So thank you for all that you've done for us and with us, and more importantly, for our scholars. So be proud for all that you've accomplished with us. And Dr. Stubblefield has something.
Good evening, everyone. A tradition we've started since I've joined the district is to present any board member leaving with a piece of student art. And tonight, we have a ceramic piece of art from one of our students. In the center of it is a heart and has multiple colors. The heart represents the care that Ms. Russell has led with in every decision. And the colors represent the beautiful diversity of our district, the many backgrounds, identities, languages, and stories that make up who we are. Throughout her time on the board, she has been unwavering in centering student voices. I hear it in my sleep at night. Deepening family engagement and advocating for teachers. She didn't just speak up about these values. She made sure they showed up in our priorities and our conversations and our actions. And this artwork is a gift to her. And we just want to say on behalf of the board and the district, thank you for your time, your service, and your unwavering commitment to making our district better. We really appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay.
You all said it all. There's nothing more to say. I have appreciated Rachel and getting to know her. Rachel's passion when she first came on the board, I was like, yikes, I don't know what we're gonna do with all this. But as everyone has said, she settled in her heart and is in absolutely the right place. You are a friend for life, Rachel, and I appreciate sitting by you and working close to you. Thank you.
The two years that I've been a part of the district board, it's a pleasure. You've been a joy. You're a fireplug. You speak well and you're concerned. When I became a member, you showed a lot of care and concern for the district and the students. And it exemplified in your festiness, which is good because it's all positive. And I appreciate that. And I've learned from you and your speaking and how you handle things in a great way. So it's been a pleasure and a joy to work with you and to be part of you in not only work, but just to be part of what you have exemplified on this board. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, anything you want to share, Ms. Russell, before we take a break for pictures?
I'll save it for the comments because I feel like I'm gonna cry and I'm not a public crier.
All right. Allow us a quick recess while we take photos with our staff and scholars. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody. Again, congratulations to our scholars, their families, felicidades. Congratulations to our administrators and employees of the month. And thank you to everybody who makes this possible. Always great to celebrate our students and keep our students and staff focused in the work that we do. All right, we're going to continue with our agenda. Next is item five on our agenda, community comment section. Just a reminder, everyone is welcome to give community comment. Just make sure you sign up no later than the Monday at noon before our board meeting. Sign up with our board clerk, and we'll make sure to get you on the agenda. A member of our team will follow up after you give comments today, if there's any follow-up or action item, and then the board will be notified of what... Any action items is a reminder, this is a one-way communication. You will communicate to the board. If there's anything you would like to leave behind or share with the board, make sure that there's enough copies, or we'll get copies to the board, or you can email to the board clerk, and we'll make sure we get that out to the board. You'll have three minutes. Please come to the podium. State your name. Your time will start at three... Once you state your name and start talking, I'll give you a heads up when you have about 30 seconds, 45 seconds, just to let you know your time's running down. And then I will let you know when your time is up. So with that, would welcome, and I apologize if I don't pronounce your names correctly, Amy Gow to the podium. Ms. Amy?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's fortuitous that I happen to be here because it actually relates to some of the information about the KISA, the state testing data. I am here to ask again for the district to give access to iXL. iXL is a math program that is hugely beneficial. It's so beneficial that there are many districts where that is their entire curriculum. I've been asking since the beginning of the school year. I'm sure Mr. Hansford is a little tired of me bothering him. But it's a resource that I believe in, and I want to fight for our students' ability to have access to the resource. It helps students develop fluency, comprehension, and math from pre-K to college-level math. Ms. Brownlee Page, you asked earlier about how we would help students who are below grade level reach up to that grade level. iXL is an excellent way to do that. I know we want to focus on using our high-quality instructional material, but iXL is a resource that can be used at home. It's a good resource to give to parents and guardians and families at home. We can give them information to say, your student is struggling in this area. Here are the things they can do at home to help them in class. So we wouldn't lose instructional time in class because students would use their school device at home to improve their skills that they need. Also, students are able to self-advocate for themselves. So whereas iReady, which is the curriculum we currently use, a teacher has to initiate the resource to the student. A teacher has to provide the resource to the student. iXL, a student can go out on their own and say, I need help with this, and they can go and they can find it on their own. So that promotes student advocacy and gives them more independence in deciding what they need to work on. I do have a few students already who have asked for additional practice. I have gone through all the iReady opportunities that they have. And so I would just really like the ability to give them all of the resources that we have available. It is free. The state of Kansas purchased it. And so I would really appreciate the opportunity to give that resource to my students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, would invite Joaquín Álvarez to the podium? Nope? Okay. Next, I'll invite Abimael Estevani? Nope? Okay. Next, Amar Horn? Next on our list, Aldo Diaz. You could help move the mic down for him, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aldo Orozco Diaz. Thank you to the board members and my superintendent for letting me speak about my school, New Stanley. In November, I asked if you would close New Stanley. At the meeting at Harmon, you said I would go to a new school. I said I don't care about a new school. I care about my school, New Stanley. I feel protected. My teachers make me feel protected by being nice and knowing what activities to do and when I need a break. You told us the new school will be bigger. At New Stanley, my class size is small. My teacher, Ms. Spencer, has time for me. If our class at the new school has 25 kids, they might cause more problems. More kids, more problems. In a big class, a ton of kids are trying to get my teacher's attention when me and her are talking. A new school is not good for my New Stanley family. You told me that only some of my teachers might go to the new school. I won't see my teachers again. Not Ms. Ennisi, not Ms. Quaz, not Ms. Shively, not Ms. Merrill, not Ms. Spencer. That's not good. My best friends might not go to the new school. I don't want to lose my friends. You told my mom that New Stanley was safe, but what does that mean? Does that mean New Stanley might get added back in next year? Does it mean you will close my school when the new school opens? Please do not ever close my school. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo.
Can we get, I didn't hear the beginning, so.
Sure.
Get a copy of his speech. And thank you, young man.
Thank you, Aldo. We can make sure we, sure. Ms. Downing, would you grab that? We'll get that, a copy to every, all the board members. Thank you, Aldo. We'll make sure we'll get a copy of his speech to the full board and superintendent. Thank you. Is Ms. Monique James present? Okay. Board, would entertain a motion to recess to executive session? To recess to executive session for attorney-client privilege to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, and Ms. Monique James for five minutes to go in at 5:53, just to give us time to transition. Is there a motion to do so? The, and board, I'm sorry, the contents of the remarks need to be in executive session, so that's why we're going into executive session. So is there a motion to recess to executive session for attorney-client privilege for five minutes, going in at 5:53, to include Dr. Stubblefield and Mr. Goheen and Ms. James? I'm sorry.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Ms. Downing?
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
And Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
I don't know if we're officially a part of the organization, but you can still attend the conference. I would have to confirm that, but I don't think we are like members of the organization, but I'll have to confirm that.
Okay. And then on the HBCU Legacy Bowl Career Fair, have we attended that before?
Yes, I believe we have. Is Ms. Middleton on, or Dr. Jones, the HBCU Legacy Bowl Career Fair? I know they have attended an HBCU Career Fair, but specifically this one, did you all attended previously? Oh, this is the first time they're attending it? Okay, you can go to the mic.
I believe this is probably the first time that we have attended that particular event.
Have you investigated the makeup of the event as well as if education majors are a group that attend?
Yes. Yes, we have investigated that as well. We know that it's more than just education majors that are a part of that event, but that is something that was definitely investigated before our team took that trip, our recruiting team.
You mean, plan on taking it? Have they taken it yet?
I believe that that is, I'm sorry.
It's on there for approval.
Yeah, I believe, I believe, I believe that's one that they do plan to take. I'm sorry.
Right, because when you research, a lot of the athletes show up, NFL teams appear, and it doesn't seem to be, well, I'll leave it at that. So is this during the time of Mardi Gras?
The, I don't know the date of Mardi Gras. February, it's February 20th, 2026. I honestly don't know the date of Mardi Gras, but last year, I just pulled up the information. There were 1,500 HBCU students from 58 different HBCUs who attended, and they often, not only just for education majors, we also recruit for our fellows program.
That's correct.
That gets you on the path to teaching. But, Dr. Nguyen, I don't know the date of Mardi Gras, honestly.
I mean, I also researched the HBCU Bowl Career Fair, and it does not seem to be, I just wonder how good of an event for us to be successful in recruiting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions on item H?
Yeah, and just for clarity, Mardi Gras is the Tuesday, February 17th, and the fair is the 20th. Just for transparency, if people are asking.
Thank you. Additional questions on item H?
How much is the total cost for the trip?
We can get that to you. I don't have it in front of me, and I don't think Dr. Jones has it in front of him. He doesn't.
Any additional questions or comments, discussion on this item? Motion to approve item H tonight? Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions on this item? Hearing none. Ms. Downing?
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
And Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, no.
Motion carries. Thank you, board. Next item on the agenda, here. Board, we are at item number seven, board updates and approvals. Board, these items have come before the board at least once and are up for potential action if it is the will of the board. First, we will welcome up our, we will have a presentation from RSP. Jenna is with us tonight from RSP, and she will give us an update on the boundary committee recommendations. As Jenna's coming forward, I do, again, just want to say thank you to the boundary committee, the boundary team, everyone that was involved in the boundary committee discussions, proposal. Ms. Russell was chair of that committee, and Ms. Brownlee Page and myself were on the committee, as well as other staff and parents, community members. Thank you for the time and the work that you all put in. We definitely don't take your recommendations lightly and appreciate what you have shared with the board. We also want to thank Aldo and everyone who has subsequently, since the first presentation, given us feedback on boundary recommendations. That's something that we also take into consideration to staff, families, and scholars from our community. So Jenna, good evening. Thanks for joining us again. I hear you have a presentation for us tonight, so welcome.
I do, I do. Thank you, board. Good evening. Jenna Wallace with RSP. I'm here tonight to go through the second read of the boundary recommendation. We came to you guys last month with the first read of the public comments as well as the final committee recommendation. Tonight, between that time, there were some slight revisions at the elementary and middle school level. So most of my time tonight is going to be walking you through those slight revisions and then open up for discussion of this final recommendation. And so I'll jump down here. So our talking points, I'll very briefly just kind of go over that foundation. We were more in-depth with it last time, so it'll be pretty brief and then focus on the different revisions. The high school recommendation tonight is as presented last meeting, so most of the focus will be. so most of the focus will be at the elementary and middle school level. And so our boundary process kicked off last spring. We have had five board meetings now that walk through the foundation, building the framework, as well as a first and second read. This process included seven committee meetings, as well as three public input opportunities. And so you can see, we are at the tail end of this process. A lot of hard work from your team, from the committee members, from everybody involved to get us to this point. Some of the key objectives that we set forward with this process included these guiding principles, objectives of right sizing the district, focusing at all levels, as well as having some specific challenges to address with our new build of the bond projects, as well as an imbalance at the high school level. So why were we here? Why did we start this process? Like I said, we had some facility planning, and so we were looking at some new buildings, wanting to open them up with adequate number of students, as well as improve our balance of schools with the capacity of our buildings. So right sizing all grade bands, so we have a functional capacity and utilization of our space. And then looking at the boundary adjustments through a geographic and proximity lens. Where can we make enhancements that would help transportation, as well as the network and student location between where students live and what buildings they attend? You can see on the bottom of this slide the Board Guiding Principles that were approved back in May. This always sets the stage as really the pillars of the entire process. And then we had our boundary criteria. And so you, as a Board, went through the activity to prioritize these 10 different criteria, landing on the feeder system, projected enrollment building utilization, and transportation being the top criteria. And so at our first read meeting, you can see that we went through a lot of information. You guys received an update on that enrollment data, as well as the 24-25 projections and the 25-26 actual counts. You guys received the committee progress at each of those seven meetings. You received the survey results and the community input that led to the final recommendation. And then we talked through some concerns with that recommendation and the overall committee consensus. And so if you want to dig back into that, you have all those slides. I'm just going to jump into these different revisions now. All right, so since last meeting to this meeting, there were some small adjustments made to the elementary and middle school boundaries that more so addressed some of the community concerns. At the elementary level, there was the reinstation of New Stanley Elementary back to its original boundaries. So within the Harmon Cluster, all of the current zones would remain as they currently operate with the consolidation of Silver City and Noble Prentice. So when we were first showing the combination of three boundaries, it's now back to the combination of two schools with New Stanley maintaining online as it currently operates. That is your only change on the elementary concept. For the middle school concept, there is a little bit more change of looking at how we can better utilize our schools, as well as maintain some of the community connectivity into Central Middle School. So some of the feedback that the district had been hearing was about the Whittier Elementary feeder and maintaining Whittier Elementary at Central Middle School. So in this revised concept, we moved the Whittier Elementary area back into Central Middle School. And so this created a need to shift the boundary slightly between Carl Bruce and Central Middle School. This would then include where Central and Carl Bruce become more balanced, and we do have all of Whittier and Grant feeding into Central Middle School. And so what these different changes achieved was our different primary community concerns that we heard from public comment, as well as some different survey feedback. We're able to preserve the Whittier community. We still maintain Y and Dot's enrollment target that the community and the committee really gave feedback on of that 1,600 number. And we balanced Central and Carl Bruce within 25 students of each other. So really improving the two middle schools that would feed into Y and Dot High. Some of the implications of these adjustments, because no boundary is ever perfect, and there's always pros and cons. Some of the cons here is we do create a slightly more fragmented feeder system. So in this case, Central Middle School would now become a split feeder, where Whittier Elementary boundary would go to Central, but then come south into the Rosedale High School. And so, or the Harmon High School. And so this would become the break within Central Middle School. Additionally, the area that we needed to adjust to balance between Central and Carl Bruce is an area that attends Grant Elementary. So along I-70, we would be creating a Grant Elementary split. North of I-70 goes to Carl Bruce. South of I-70 goes into Central. So let's look at this on a map here. This first piece here just goes into these different elements. And so what I put in red are the revisions based on that first read. So you can see at the elementary level, the revision would be New Stanley remaining online. And then for the middle school boundaries, the revision is Whittier, stays at Central Middle School, and then Grant becoming a split feeder between Carl Bruce and Central. These different revisions continue to hit the primary committee feedback. So a lot of this information on this slide goes into the primary objectives and the, really, the discussion points that the committee have through their seven meetings. How do we decrease Y and Dot? How do we increase Schlegel? How do we have a complete feeder as possible and disrupt fewer students? In this case, these revisions still continue to check all these boxes. All of the changes at the middle school level reduce the number of students impacted, so we do bring our total impact lower at the elementary and middle school level with these revisions. And so here is the map of your revised elementary recommendation. You can see where it's circled at the bottom of the map, which would be Area A as the revision in the second read. New Stanley comes back online with their current boundary, and we have the future elementary, including Noble Prentice and Silver City existing boundaries. All other zones on this map are the same as what was presented for the first read, as well as went to public input and committee recommendations. For the middle school map, we have the two areas labeled A and B that are the proposed revisions. Area A, if I come down here, is the Whittier Elementary boundary, so south of Central Avenue. In the first read, we had this proposed coming down into the Rosedale Middle School boundary. And in this case, we reinstated it back to where they currently attend at Central Middle School. Area B is the area that currently goes to Grant Elementary. And we are proposing that if you lived north of I-70, then in your, in that area, you would then go into Carl Bruce. This allows Central to take back the Whittier area and still be balanced with Carl Bruce. Without it, we have an imbalance between those two middle schools. And then for the high school zones, this is as recommended. This is the same map that went to final committee approval, as well as public input and your first read. So no changes here. And so the feeder system for these different revisions is reflected here. Some of the changes here, so Grant Elementary becoming a split feeder between Central and Carl Bruce. It's about a 50-50% split of the students. So 50% of Grant students live north of I-70, 50% live below. And that's how they would feed into either Central or Carl Bruce, but they would all feed into Y and Dot High. The other change is within the Whittier up to Central. So you can see Whittier down here in the green because they still continue to be a Harmon feeder school, but they would first go to Central, and then they would go to J.C. Harmon. So this creates where they maintain their middle school assignment, but we have another avenue to reduce Y and Dot High enrollment, which was one of those primary objectives of the process. Here you have your elementary revised projections, and so proposing that the new boundary implemented in 27, 28. Adequately solving are orange, so that would be the schools projected over their building capacity. So in this sense, your only adjustments are within the new build. In that case, we're reducing the number of students projected from your first read because we have New Stanley back online with their about 220 students residing. And so the new building would have about 440 students projected to reside in that boundary. And then for your middle school and high schools, so your high school table is the same as what has been presented, where we drop Y and Dot High to below 1,600 total students, increase Schlegel to over 1,000. The middle school table is what shifts a little bit more from last time. So Carl Bruce and Central with these new revised boundaries both enroll about 775 to 780 total students. So you can see in 2930, a six-student difference between those two zones. So a really stable, similar area of students between our two middle schools. Rosedale, in this case, is the, is the school that decreases as we now remove both Grant and Whittier out of the Rosedale zone. And so that enrollment does decrease to about 370 students for Rosedale. And so in this case, you also have down at the bottom the number of students impacted. So we're looking at about 1,000 students impacted. And this is a reduction from the first read recommendation as we move some of the students that were impacted, like the New Stanley families and like the Whittier families, back to their current attendance, reducing the number of students impacted at both elementary and middle school level. And so that goes through the slides I have for tonight. We are at the tail end, and so I just want to open the floor for any discussion or questions that you guys may have with these adjustments from the first read.
Thanks again, Jenna, for taking in all the information, guiding us through the process, and making sure we got to tonight to have a second read. I know it's a lot of back and forth and communication between Administration Board and community. So appreciate you, you all, making changes as appropriate and bringing this back forward. Would open the floor, the floor to the Board for any questions or discussion for Jenna. Ms. Russell.
I don't really have a question. I think I just have a couple of thank-yous. I want to thank the members of the Boundary Committee who agreed to six meetings, and I think we ended up with seven meetings. And just the really detailed questions, the deep dives from historical information to help me understand how we get these numbers. And so just really want to share my appreciation for the committee. As, as it has been presented, the Board is potentially moving in a direction that differs from the community or from the committee's recommendation, and it is a recommendation. And so this is within the rights and the privilege of the Board, but I also want to acknowledge just the time and the commitment and the thoughtful conversations that the committee had, Board. And I know that there is no easy answer. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the committee. My second thank you is to the folks from New Stanley. I will say, being on this dais is never easy. There are decisions that are made that always impact someone. And this experience from the disagreement to this moment today with the New Stanley staff and family has been completely pleasant. I will say that we all wanted to achieve the same goal, whether it was the togetherness of the community or understanding the district's fiscal responsibilities and understanding the efficiencies. Everyone was very respectful, came together as a community, advocated, asked questions in a way that was not belittling to one side or the other. And it was an experience that made me really, really proud because I don't oftentimes get that experience on this side. It's, oh my gosh, you guys are doing this. And so I just want to extend my gratitude to them for their advocacy, their organizing. That's like at the core of my heart, is community organizing. But also just the, the way in which it was approached and the individual reach-outs and wanting to be very intentional. And so thank you to the New Stanley families and community for just your respect throughout this process. With that being said, I will say that I don't want to mislead or misguided anyone. I think the purpose in changing is to take an intentional pause. I think there are things that both sides advocated for that need to be addressed, that need to be resolved. I don't want this to come up a year from now or two years from now and say the Board voted to not close New Stanley. I want to be clear that like this is a moment to hit pause. And there are continued things that this district needs to do and things that, or people that need to be part of conversations. And so this is a pause. It's not to say that we won't be here having this conversation again, but we'll be much more intentional and much more inclusive. And so I think from, on, on my behalf, I want to make sure that we're not giving the sentiment that this means it's open for forever because there are efficiencies. And I'm a strong advocate that our students deserve wonderful facilities and not ones that have Band-Aids on them. And so I think we all could agree and come to that commonality. I think just the approach and how we move forward really matters. And so I just wanted to get those few things off my chest. But thank you, Jenna and Rob, who's not here tonight on my last night. But thank you, guys. I had the experience of working with you all before I was a Board member and now working with you all as a Board member, and just really grateful for your guys' partnership, your commitment, your honesty, your transparency. So thank you for all of the experiences that you've provided to me, but also to the KC KPS family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Your comments, questions, discussion, questions for Jenna or RSP?
I'd just like to say thanks to Boundary Committee as well. Change is always, change can be difficult at times. Doesn't mean it's a bad thing or negative thing, but you know, you will have some apprehension and, and some disagreements along the way, but that comes with it when you're trying to progress. But I want to say thank you. I think you all did a well, good job. Nothing's perfect, but it turned out to be as sufficient as, as it can be to, 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 you know, feed the, the, the smart, excuse me, the middle schools and the elementary schools to feed in and do it. Nothing's perfect, but it, it's, it's workable. And once they think, I know it's, it's been, it can be difficult, but in reorganizing, but let me, let me say that. But just thank you. And detto what, what, I appreciate Ms. Russell saying that. I want to say thank you that the community, we listen. We, we have to listen. And I say we, that's all of us included. And it goes back and forth, the dialogue with New Stanley, so it's workable. And if nothing is done in an intent, it's just always for the, I can speak for myself and the Board, it's for the betterment, always for the betterment we strive for, the community and the district. It's not, it's not done anything personal. So oftentimes, you have to, through, through change, you have to take a step back and look at things and revamp. So I'm glad we did that, and you all respected that, and we respect, we respect each other. And I want to say thank you with that. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. There are no other questions? Would entertain a motion to approve the Boundary Committee recommendations as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further questions or discussion?
I should have said.
Ms. Brownlee Page, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just hope we continue to work on our communication. Surveys are okay, but I think we're smart enough and with the help of the community and others that we can come up with some other ways to gather data. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Ms. Downing, roll call, please.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Yolanda Clark. Wanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes. Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, board. And again, I know Rachel said it, but thank you to the staff, Doug, Miguel, everyone else who was involved, Dr. Pagram that was involved in helping us with the entire process and the extra meeting night that we had. So thank you. All right, we'll continue with our agenda next on our agenda. And thank you Jenna, tell Rob we missed him tonight. Next board on our agenda, it is recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approved the district calendar for the 2026-2027 school year as submitted by Mr. Hansford and recommended by Dr. Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none. Ms. Downing.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, board. Next, it's recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approved the proposed AIA-A133 construction contract and supporting documents for McAllen Gordon Construction to serve as a construction manager at risk, CMAR for the Sumner Edition and the new Central Middle School. Promotion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Downing.
Y'all had Luke back there sweating.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
That was intentional, Luke.
It wasn't.
Kidding.
What's up here shaking my head? No.
Next, it's board, it's recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approved the contract between USD 500 and CHWC to transfer land for the construction of the new Central Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Downing.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, board. Next, board, it's recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approved the resolution to formally begin the process of dissolving the Bonner Springs Edwardsville School District's membership and the special education co-op and dissolving the special education cooperative as submitted by Dr. Lori and recommended by Dr. Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Lopez.
Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Are we asking to terminate or are they asking?
They are requesting to terminate. And with their separation, we will no longer have a Wyandotte County Special Ed Cooperative. So each district will just oversee Special Ed independently. So that's why the portion is in there about dissolving the Wyandotte County Cooperative.
So if they wanted to separate, why didn't they request a termination?
They requested it.
Go ahead.
The resolution that'll end up going to the state will be a joint resolution because it has to be because the entities dissolve or dissolving rather than just one district leaving a multi-district co-op. So they're, they're making the request that we do this and they've staffed up to be able to have their independent special education department in the district or in their district and provide services independent of a co-op. But because there's only two districts left in the co-op, that ends the co-op. So both districts have to pass a resolution.
Additional questions, Ms. Russell?
Correct me if I'm wrong, their board already voted on this or?
Last night.
Okay, last night. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions on this item? Hearing seeing none. There's a motion and a second. Ms. Downing.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved. This is.
This is a different one.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay.
It reads the same.
I just want to make sure we have the right.
But the documents are different. Like if you look at the documents closely, it's the.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Board recommended, thank you, so make sure I'm reading the right one. Recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approved the proposed AIA-A133 construction contract and supporting documents for McAllen Gordon Construction to serve as the construction manager at risk, CMAR for the Sumner Edition and the new Central Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Downing.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, board. All right, next agenda item, board, it's recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approved the AIA-A133 contract and supporting documents for Newkirk Novak Construction Partners to serve as the construction manager at risk, CMAR for the new elementary school and the new Argentine Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion on this item, board? Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Downing.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
And Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, board. All right, we will continue with our agenda. Next agenda item, board, is new business. These items, board, are for informational purposes only. No action is being requested of you tonight, but they're here for you to review. And if you have any questions, you can ask some of those now or we can, you can submit those to Dr. Stubblefield and we'll make sure that we have responses to you. These items, as a reminder, may or may not come back before the board for action at a future date. First item on the new business agenda, item A, the nutritional service vehicle replacement. Are there any questions on this item?
Mr. Lopez, I don't know if I read it clearly. Now, we're getting something new. We're not going to try to sell what we have at all or we'll, we'll trade it in and get some discount?
Mr. Martin is going to come forward to chair that.
Good evening, everyone. So yes, to answer to that question, yes, we will be disposing of that vehicle. Once we're able to get a replacement vehicle, we'll go through our normal disposal process where we'll post that through the auction, through GovDeals and hopefully be able to get a good price for it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. Any additional questions on this item? Not the next agenda item, the U.S. Soccer Foundation Mini Pitch Grant. Any questions on this item? Thank you, board. Next item, the summer 2026 capital.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Russell, go ahead.
So in my experience, this takes up a good chunk of the space. And so I just want to make sure that this pitch does not impact the building's current activities that happen. Like I know that they have field day out there and they're already in a very small enclosed. And so I guess I'm not really asking a question. I'm just making sure that this is completely vetted and that there aren't any unintentional frustrations or things that come about. I know they utilize that space for parking when they have their events just because of the neighborhood and the way. And so just really making sure that this is the, the best fit. So that was it. No questions.
Make sure that our leadership team notes that. Yes, Ms. Brownlee Page.
And in lieu of what Ms. Russell was saying, there's a piece of land that's directly across from the school. When we were having trouble trying to figure out which the walkers going waverly or the buses going hassle, all of that. Would that grant allow them to purchase the land across the street to create the pitch thing?
I'm not sure. We can take down these questions. I don't know if Mr. Clemmons have any answers tonight. And I don't know exactly where the pitch is going, but we can look at it. And when we bring it back for approval, we can have that information or.
Because that is a problem, you know, in terms of parking and having the space. And so we already used some of it for something else to make room. I didn't know if they would allow them to do that.
I just wanted to, I don't disagree with you, but for clarity and to make sure that it's noted, I want to make sure that the full board is okay with Doug exploring that option so that if it comes back with that option, that we all are in agreement. Like if he goes and pursues it and then it makes sense and he brings it back with that option, I want to make sure that we all feel okay with that or that we're all good with that. Again, it'll still be an option at that point, but just want to make sure that we give clear direction. Because I also know this is a grant competition too or whatever it said. So not hearing any opposing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it said they were awarded the grant, so that's not the issue. The question is, can you use that money to purchase the land across the street? And you're saying, are we clear? We just want to know.
Well, what I'm saying is that like when it is.
To, go ahead. The money, the, that money is specific to create that. If it goes anywhere else, that wouldn't come from that money. The money is to put the pitch there. And I don't know, and I don't, Doug, you know exactly where they're thinking about? I don't know where they're thinking.
I do. And if I could, I just wanted to come up and clarify that this is not a grant necessarily for money. The U.S. Soccer Foundation and Musco Lighting and there's another sponsor will install the unit. So the district doesn't receive money that we might apply someplace else. Okay? So and they're looking at putting this, if you can picture Carruthers, the southeast corner.
There's a Gaga pit.
There's a Gaga pit. Is Gaga pit there? I think it's on the other side. I could be wrong about that. But there's kind of an open area. I do know that the one they use at Bannaker, they use it all the time. They love it. I do know parking's an issue. If you want me to look at the property across the street, which we've looked at before, that might be, I might suggest better suited for parking rather than taking the kids across the street to go to. And there's a time constraint on the mini pitch. So but if you want to look at that, we can sure look at it.
Well, I was just concerned and I've been down there. I went to school there, so I'm old. It's been there a while. But my concern, you don't have a lot of space. So it just, I don't know how they're going to pull that off with the parking and everything.
We can look and if we bring it back and if that's not the will of the board, we will move on. We'll get the additional information. Yeah.
I have a question for myself personally. So the grant was, is it designated for Carruthers only?
Yes.
Okay, same way with Bannaker.
Correct.
So both were designated. So both of those schools, this is the clarification for me, clarity for me.
Yes.
The grant was designated, this mini pitch for both of those schools. It's not for any other schools. It's designated and earmarked for both of those schools.
Correct.
Okay.
They have their own process, how they look at demographics and what offering students have. And they really try to target where students may not have access to that, to introduce it and that sort of thing. So they do a lot of research and then they approach the school districts with the location.
Exactly right.
That's my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. All right. No, he said good night like he's leaving. I'm kidding, Doug. If there are no other questions or as questions arise, good questions, thank you. Make sure, I think we've noted those. Make sure we send those to Dr. Stubblefield. These will come back before the board at a later time. The next item, item C, any questions on the summer 2026 capital projects that are in, that are to bid?
I got a question for Doug. No, I'm just kidding.
Don't do it like that.
All right.
Shouldn't let him walk all the way up here.
There are no questions. Again, submit any questions that do come up. Board to Dr. Stubblefield. All right, next board, we will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Stubblefield.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few things tonight. First, I want to remind everyone, our parents and our families, we did send direct communication as well that the Unified Government Public Health Department will host a free immunization clinic for students on Wednesday, December 10th. That's tomorrow between 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. We, again, we did communicate with families directly, but just in case anybody is watching, they are offering that. The clinic will be held at the Health Department located at 619 Ann Avenue. Students must bring an updated immunization record. Without it, vaccinations cannot be provided. Just wanted to share that. Also want to say congratulations to two of our district leaders and administrators here in the Department of Family and Community Engagement. The Latinx Education Collaborative hosted its annual changemaker ceremony last week where they honored Naomi Tolotino as the Administrator of the Year Award and Martha Adela as the Mentor of the Year. These awards honor exceptional Latinx individuals who work tirelessly, tirelessly to uplift the voices and experiences in their community. And both of those individuals were nominated by their peers. And they recognize several Latinx educators across the greater Kansas City metro area. But we had two of them, so congratulations to both of them. And then I just want to highlight a couple of things again. KC KPS is proud to announce that we had a historic achievement. Students have earned over officially $321 million in scholarships from the 2025-26 academic year. That's the highest total ever recorded through the district's post-secondary scholarship initiative. And congratulations to all of our students and the staff that supported them in applying for these scholarships. So thank you. And I want to wish everyone a safe holiday break. Because we, this is our last, our only official regular board meeting. And students will, staff, our offices will be closed starting Tuesday, December 23rd at 2 o'clock p.m. And we will open, reopen Friday, January 2nd. Yes, we will reopen on Friday, January 2nd. So between that time, our entire district is shut down for all employees. So thank you and have a wonderful break.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Just a few notes for me. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving and time off. And I hope everyone has a great, echoing what Dr. Stubblefield said, has a great holiday season, some time off, time to relax and re-energize and get ready for the next semester in January. So thank you to everybody for all the work that you put in in this, in this first half of the year. I do also just want to make sure that we note the inauguration for the mayor, the new mayor, Crystal Watson. And the new commission will be on December 15th. It is an open invitation for the community. I know it's open to anyone. So some of you can join as we swear in a new mayor, someone that we all know and are very familiar with, Crystal Watson. Again, congratulations to Ms. Watson, to Mayor-elect Watson and to the entire commission who were elected. So if you have a chance, come out and check that out. I also want to lift up, Dr. Stubblefield mentioned the Latinx collaborative and the nominations or awards that they gave out. They also put out a study recently, which I was able to speak at, at an event that they had, a press release around the educators of color, particularly Latino educators, Latino teachers. And they've made a concerted effort to increase the number of Latinx teachers across the district's metrowide. And they have seen gains since the last year when they first published this report, including in KC KPS. And I know we continue to work to retain and recruit talented staff, all staff of all racial and ethnic backgrounds. But it was great to see, see that report that highlighted the efforts across. that report that highlighted the efforts across the metro to continue to recruit Latino, Latinx educators. And they highlighted, again, our district being, you know, 60% Hispanic Latino students, and the need to make sure that we are reflective of our student population. So, it was great to see that, to review the report. They also highlighted one of our first-year educators, teachers at Washington High School, Jonathan, who is going through one of their programs as a first-year teacher at Washington. So, thank you to Jonathan for the work that you do there. Again, thank you to everybody for your work, board. Everyone have a great holiday season. Can't wait to start January with you all. We'll open the floor for any of the board members.
I can-
Ms. Clark?
Give a SPED update. The SPED advisory, there was a SPED advisory meeting that was held November the 13th. An update was provided to the parent subgroup about their various plans, and just making sure that our parents and our families feel empowered in the, in the space of special education. And then the parent subgroup met December the 4th, discussed communication plan, how to get more parents and families involved in the events that the SPED department has, has scheduled and planned. And then lastly, our next parent meeting will be January the 8th at 5 o'clock. It is here at District Office, and then the SPED Advisory Quarterly Meeting will be February the 5th. So, I know a lot of people have been interested in continuing to ask questions about SPED. This is a really good way to get involved in a very small group setting where you're able to get your questions answered. And so, I just encourage anyone that has, people that have asked questions or have an interest, to please show up and be involved. This is, that's what this time is set for. Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Larry, for everything you do.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, Ms. Brownlee Page?
Yes, I, myself, and Dr., excuse me, Mr. Mylan.
No, Dr.
Okay. We work with the academic committee. We've had the opportunity to meet. I want to thank Mr. Hanford, as well as Dr. Wright, and they've done a phenomenal job. Our parents who own the committee are excited, along with some of our retired employees from the district, who I beg to come back and help us. And they want everyone to know their concern. They're not here to hurt anybody. They just want their children, their grandchildren, anybody to get the best possible education they possibly can. We'll be meeting next week. It's a virtual meeting, and we're going to try to meet once a month, and we're going to bring in people, because we have a lot of programs people don't know about. Now, some would say, well, they ought to know. They said they didn't know. So, we're going to meet them where they are, and we're going to provide them with that information, and then we're going to brainstorm the second part of the meeting to try to come up with ways to get our parents involved, see what we need to do to help, and help the teachers, everybody. Because in order for us to make it, it's going to take all of us. And I think we have good programs, we have good people, we just got to find a way to get all the information out. So, again, thank you, Mr. Hanford. Thank you, Dr. Wright, as well as people like Linda Murray, Ms. Hall, and some of the others, who have been here, who know. And this meeting next week, we're going to focus on attendance and behavior policies. So, we got to get them here, and we just got to figure out, how do we do it? We're not experts, but we got a lot of intelligent people in this room, as well as in the community. So, please check with our board clerk to get the link. We'll start at 5:00 on time, and we do try to get you out on time. Everybody's excited, and sometimes they don't want to leave, but we got an hour, and we're going to make it work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page.
Yes, just briefly, I want to press forward a little more what Ms. Page has said. I want to, first of all, just thank the board for this semester that we, we've shown and worked and collaborated on many issues, the progress and the process we've been going, and all our superintendents, assistant superintendents, and so our growth and our function. Nothing's perfect, but we, as we work together to improve, as Ms. Page said, to involve the community, get us involved, we stay connected to make the next semester even more prosperous, if you will, as we progress to make the district just the best it could be. But as we stay, we stay focused and move ourselves out of the way. I'm just saying that for me, and think about the sole purpose of the district and the children, to make it, the district the best school district we can make it be. But as we go forward, our challenges are there, and the academic boundary, budget committees, we can always do better, but all the things we can do is to do the best we can. And I just want to stay encouraged and look forward to another great semester for next year coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. And before I let Rachel take the floor, I do just also want to say thank you to our McKinney Vento team, who does a tremendous job to support our McKinney Vento students. Jessica and her entire team, that entire department, really works hard to make sure that our McKinney Vento students have transportation, have the resources that they need, have the supports. We talked about academic supports earlier, Ms. Brownlee Page, and they do a great job of making sure that our McKinney Vento students have those resources and supports, and also making sure that during the holiday seasons, they have, the families have access to be able to make sure that the kids have a wonderful holiday season with gifts and food and other items. So, thank you, Jessica, and your entire team for their work. I know this week they are going to celebrate with those families and have them coming to District Office to pick up food and other items that, that they may need. So, just want to give a quick shout out, because sometimes everyone's doing some amazing work in our district, but we don't always get to, get to hear about it, and this is one this week that I got to hear a little bit about the work that they're doing this week, and so thank you to that, that team, so.
No, I was just going to echo that and thank all the staff members who adopted families from the McKinney Vento, and also our community partners. They were able to help. I think Jessica told me over 400 families this year. So, thank you to staff members, departments, and community partners who made sure that those families received gifts and all the things for the holiday season.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right. So, of course, I have my little speech, so I don't be talking for forever, but I just wanted to say, be quiet, Reverend Johnson. My final farewell from the dais, serving on the USD 500 Board has been one of the most meaningful responsibilities of my life, and walking away leaves a beautiful, heavy space in my soul. Over these past years, it has been a privilege engaging in this work deeply around what matters most, right here in KCK, shaping outcomes for our kids and strengthening the future of this community. I've also enjoyed opportunities like serving on the KSB Board, attending the National Convention, an advocacy conference as a minority delegate representing our state, and presenting at conferences and bringing back best practices, ideas, and structures, all sharpening my understanding of what is possible right here in KCKPS. But most importantly, my favorite thing is showing up for the kids. I enjoy the events like graduation, the moment we are all here for, but even going to, are you faster than a fifth grader, and kicking the walkers off, and all of the events in between. I could talk about always dressing up for Halloween, always showing up at a party with goodies. I really, really have enjoyed every building, every classroom, every school that I've been able to be a part of this during my time. Every opportunity has expanded my voice, and every room has reminded me why we do this, our students. Dr. Stubblefield, thank you. These four years have been a lot. Most of it good. I wanted to make sure I said, most of it good. Literally fires, but your leadership, steadiness, and commitment to KCKPS have meant more than you know. Your leadership, your listening to my wacky ideas and saying, I think I can remove that barrier. It has been an honor serving alongside you and having you lead our district. To my fellow board members, thank you for listening to this young buck, as Mr. Mylan says, for saying yes to my ideas, and even for rethinking your approach when we didn't quite agree. We have accomplished so much together. This work is never easy, but we pushed, questioned, stretched, and succeeded in ways that matter. As I step away from this dais, I leave you with these three things. Center students always. Every decision should begin and end with one question. Is this good for students? Number two, value our people, from the superintendent to teachers to support staff. Find innovative ways to celebrate those who are here and attract the brilliant talent yet to come. We lead by example. And finally, and probably the most important question, what would Rachel do? I thought I was funny. Y'all are supposed to laugh.
Eh, no.
Thank you again for this community, thank you again to this community for the opportunity to serve, to lead, to advocate, and to learn. I am forever grateful for this chapter, and I look forward to staying connected, involved, and engaged in the years to come. Lastly, our students deserve the world, and I'll always be cheering for them and all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rachel.
Of course. Be quiet. Mr. Mylan, you so silly. But one thing I did also want to say, in the spirit of community and in the spirit of the future of our district, is tomorrow is the deadline for the survey for our North Star 2031 vision. I want to make sure that everyone completes this survey. This is my ask to comms, to make sure that we share it out again across the district, to make sure that we're hearing from a variety of voices. I don't know what the data looks like now, how many folks have responded, but I'm excited for this next chapter for KCKPS, and I'm excited to continue to get on your nerves in under three minutes. And so, thank you guys for serving, and thank you guys for letting me be a part of it.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. With that, board, we have come to Item 10 on our agenda. Again, reminder, we already took care of Item A, Ms. Downing. So, would now entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under coma, to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Dr. Pegram, Mr. Hansford, Dr. Jones, for seven minutes to go in at 7:05? 7:05?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Downing.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
And Dr. Winn.
Dr. Winn, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to return to open session, please. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Mylan. Don.
Hey. Wanda Brownlee Page?
Yes.
Wanda Clark?
Yeah, Wanda Clark, yes.
Andy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.?
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell. Yes.
And Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
All right, thank you. Motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma to include Dr. Stubblefield and Mr. Goheen. And Dr. Jones for 10 minutes to go in at 7:32.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Mylan. Ms. Downing.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Wanda Clark?
Wanda Clark, yes.
Andy Lopez?
Andy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.?
Robert Mylan, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
And Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Wanda Clark?
Wanda Clark, yes.
Andy Lopez? Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
And Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Okay, motion to return to open session, please. Moved by Mr. Mylan, seconded by Ms. Russell, done.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Belinda Clark.
Belinda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
And Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, uh, motion to extend executive session for twelve minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Milan, done.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Belinda Clark.
Belinda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
And Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. ... Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Moved as...
Seconded.
Seconded. Ms. Downing. Motion to return to...
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Milan Jr.
Robert Milan Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Ms. Yolanda Brownlee Page.
Yolanda Brownlee Page, yes.
All right, thank you, Board. Just a reminder, we do have our Board Budget Meeting on the 19th at 1 o'clock on Zoom, so you should have a link for that. And then I know there's an academic committee, but other than that, Board, I don't think there's any other Board meetings in the near future. So everyone have a great holiday if we don't see you before then. Board, I'll see you on the 19th. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Ms. Russell, do you want to... Have a good night.